Good evening, welcome to the City Council Special Meeting for Tuesday, August 29, 2023. Mrs. Hillbrook, will you please call roll?
Yes, sir. Councilman Delgarza?
I am present.
Councilman Crocker?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Young?
Here.
Councilman Loughran?
Here.
Mayor Bucknate?
Here.
I know that Ms. Scott will not be joining us tonight. I don't know about Ms. Elise.
I didn't visit with her today, so we'll see. Hopefully she'll get here.
Because of the detour.
All right, if everyone will please rise for the pledge, just followed by a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, and under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Garza.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. How are y'all?
Doing great.
Excellent.
Do you have any announcements, reminders?
I do have a handful of reminders.
Okay.
I thought the same thing. It's a special meeting. We may not have any, but we have some that are timely and they're important. On behalf of the Parks Department and Explore Victoria, we want to remind the public that Sombrero Fest will take place at the Victoria Community Center grounds on Saturday, September 2nd and Sunday, September 3rd. The ticketed event is open to the public and features the CBA BBQ Cook-Off, softball and cornhole tournaments, vendors and live music, and the public can visit explorevictoria.com for more information. On behalf of the Fire Department, we want to invite you and the public to a ribbon-cutting and open house for Fire Station Number One at 606 East Goodwin, which will take place on Wednesday, September 6th at 9:00 a.m. On behalf of the Library, the Library Advisory Board is accepting applications for appointment for three positions. Applications are due by September 18th and can be found on our website at victorix.gov/boards-commissions or at the City Secretary's Office. And lastly, another reminder for the Mayor's Youth Council that applications for the 2024 Mayor's Youth Council will close on Thursday, August 31st, and is open to high school juniors and seniors who live within Victoria County. More information can be found at victorix.gov/youthcouncil.
All right, thank you. Okay. Any publicly and employee recognitions?
I don't believe so. We had one, but I'd rather save that for next week.
Okay.
So that he can be here.
Okay. Do we have any items from council?
Are we gonna pull item, or can we pull out on D1?
Yes, sir. You bet. We'll pull item D1. And then, Mr. Madrid, if we have someone come in from the citizens, I think that's his seat. But it does look like he'll be joining us tonight, so if there's no other items from council. I just have one thing. We are gonna go into an executive session prior to taking up item E3, and we will return after executive session to take up E3. All right, citizens' communication. We don't have anybody that's registered, so we will close that as well and go into items with public hearings. Item C1.
Item C1 is a budget, a budget public hearing?
What? No, no, I got it. Sorry. I didn't think April was done.
I didn't either.
What? Yeah, mine.
Okay, I assure you this is not an hour-long presentation, but I did want to recap, just big picture, what the proposed budget is and the tax rate, considering that we have those public hearings this evening and have those initial action items tonight. What you see here is the updated total proposed budget for fiscal year '24. You'll see on the left-hand side, a total proposed budget of $256 million. This is slightly higher than what was officially proposed on August 1st by the tune of $390,000, and I'll speak about what that's about here in a few minutes. But I did want to show you some updated tables and charts associated with the new amount. So again, the updated proposed budget totals $256 million, which again is an increase of roughly $400,000 compared to what was officially proposed on August 1st. The pie chart on the right is for the general fund. That is where that difference resides, solely and within that fund, and specifically within the Public Safety Services category. This is for a pay program that I'll speak to in the next slide, but this is the category where that, where that increase has come in. This has increased the Public Safety Services portion of the pie by 1%. So when I proposed this on August 1st, it had Public Safety at 56% of the general fund, and now it's at 57% thanks to this increase that we've included for today. As I mentioned, this is all solely associated with a adjustment to starting pay for police and fire. When I showed this slide on August 1st, this was a total of just shy of $1.2 million, and now totals $1.5 million because of that addition of $390,000. It is $124,000 for police and $266,000 for the Fire Department. At the bottom, we categorized this within the Fire step and PD step, and so these two red and blue colors associated with this bar chart have increased to accommodate those respective increases within those departments. Nothing else has changed. Naturally, one of the most common questions I'm sure you're thinking of is, okay, well, that's great, but where is this money coming from? And so in this chart, we've, we've attempted to summarize quite a bit of information within this slide. But on the green bar, which is, this is a very similar slide that you saw on August 1st, shows how we, in essence, came up with that $390,000. We did increase our projection for sales tax revenue. We also increased our projection and franchise fees collected and interest income. And we also accounted for a portion of the increase in fire that would actually come as part of the contract that we have with the county, since they pay a percentage of that. So that's that $39,000. And then the other is pretty much coming from excess fund balance. And the reason why we wanted to put this on the slide is to show that regardless of that, we still have an excess of, an excess of over $2 million above our minimum reserve requirement, which is 14.9. And we are anticipating an ending fund balance at the end of fiscal year '24 of 17.1, which is still, again, in excess of $2 million above our minimum reserve. So we feel fairly comfortable with the adjustments that we've made and comfortable with the increase in the recurring expenditure budget of the general fund by $390,000. Before I move on to the next topic, any questions on that adjustment? Okay. We also, of course, are having a public hearing and an action item related to the property tax rate, and so I did want to make sure to include this slide to also serve as a refresher of the proposed tax rate, which is the .0684. I'm sorry. The proposed tax rate of .5898, which is a decrease of .0684, which is roughly seven cents or 13% of where we stood currently. Any questions on the proposed tax rate? Okay. One of the things that was also pending and left sort of unclear at the August 1st presentation was related to the health fund and some potential adjustments to health insurance premiums. So I wanted to convey and be transparent with what those changes will be now that we have figured it out. This was a slide that I shared on August 1st. At the right-hand most side of this, you know, we had discussed on August 1st the fact that we were looking at making some changes to the health plan and the premiums. And this is where it's at. And you may recall back then that we wanted to take a different philosophical approach to how to go about decreasing premiums as opposed to it just being something that is, oh, we're decreasing by $50 each one, or something to that effect. And so what we did was that we actually looked at percentage split of how we're splitting that premium. So I'll call your attention to actually the bottom half of this slide, which shows the current premium and percentage allocation, and you'll see how it's not consistent. So you'll see how, for example, for the employee and spouse category, the employee percentage is 40% and the city's 60. But you'll notice that for family, it's 27% employee, 73% city. So there really isn't a rhyme or reason to the percentage split of this, and we think we're at a right time to be able to change the conversation to focus on that, because it would obviously be naive of us to think that premiums will never go back up. And so I think it's important that we have a conversation around a philosophical approach to how we split these premiums. And in essence, what we're, what we're trying to explore is the feasibility, the feasibility of phasing, because it would take probably a couple of years to get to where we have on one plan a 30-70% split and on the other, an 80-20% split, because you may recall the plans are a little bit different. And so we want to be cognizant of that. And so for fiscal year '24, we're in essence taking like a phase-one approach, if you will, to move in that direction. And so you'll see at the right-hand side of the table at the bottom that with the proposed changes, you're beginning to see that, for example, the employee and spouse goes from 40% to 37%. And so that's beginning to work its way down. And you're, and you'll begin to kind of see how some of these elements potentially need to be adjusted over time. So for example, you'll notice on the health, on the high deductible plan number two, which is the one at the bottom, you'll see how, for example, employee and spouse and employee and children went from 32% to 29, 28 to 26. This would be the plan that we would target at 20% at some point. So we're just trying to kind of work our way down to that split. What that results in is it decreases that are, you can see at the top, that aren't really, don't really have a relationship with each other, because again, we're taking each one and trying to take a percentage approach. And so you'll see how at the top, you'll see that on the employee and spouse plans, on both plans, it decreased the most, but that's because, again, the percentage, the employee was already bearing a higher percentage split of that premium, and we're trying to work it down. I hope that makes sense. I know it's a busy slide. But in essence, again, just trying to take that different philosophical approach to it. And so you'll see that with high deductible plan number one, employee and spouse will decrease by 7%, employee and children by 1.4, and then employee and family by just shy of 1%, and so on and so forth. What I think this does, again, is that it presents an opportunity for us to, creates an opportunity to help educate our workforce on the cost of the premium, on the percentage split, because again, we want to make sure that we're all educated, so that if these premiums ever do go up, everybody's understanding of how we all ride up or down together, based off of our philosoph, philosophy, right? So anyway, so just want to be transparent with you on, on what the game plan is, on, again, getting to a 30-70% split and a 20-80% split with the plans. We already had allocated $75,000 in the proposed budget that was proposed August 1st to account for the increase that the city's gonna pick up, because to be clear, the cost of the premium isn't going down holistically. The cost of the premium's staying the same. The city's simply picking up a bigger portion of it. And that's how we're gonna work our way down to that split. And because we have a healthy fund balance now in the health fund, right, which we hadn't had in a while, it allows us the ability to be able to do this. Any questions on that? Okay.
Yeah, could you, could you go back to it for a minute?
And repeat everything?
Yeah, that would be good. Now, for the single person.
Yeah, the single person's not impacted. We kind of left that single person element sort of untouched. When we went through the compensation study four years ago, a lot of employers are actually free for employee onlys. We didn't feel comfortable going to that extent, but many of the cities that we lose firefighters and police officers to, if you're single, you actually don't pay anything for health insurance. And so we were trying to be, be competitive in that regard. This obviously, this, this type of structure always, also by default, allows cities in essence to, how can I word it? Obviously, with it being more cost-friendly to be on our plan as a single body, it by default, you know, encourages families to have conversations about their health insurance coverages, since sometimes, obviously, there's other options with a spouse or some other means. So that's why organizations kind of have transitioned to that type of model. Okay. As a refresher on the timeline, we, of course, are here today on August 29th for our public hearings and first votes. And then at a regular council meeting next week, we'll have another public hearing and then final votes on the tax rate and the budget. And of course, the budget becomes effective October 1st. If there are any issues, concerns, et cetera, you know, with either the tax rate or the budget, we'll have to revisit the timeline since there are some posting requirements, you know, associated with that. But we've left ourselves that cushion in September in case we need to do that. And that is all I have.
All right. No other questions for Mr. Garza? Then at this time, I'll open a public hearing on item C1. Anybody wishing to speak on this item, please come up to the front mic. Seeing no one rise, we will close the public hearing and go into item C2.
Item C2 is a public hearing on the 2023-2024 City of Victoria Tax Rate.
Anybody have a presentation on this?
Sort of.
No, it was just the same one. Yeah. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It was just that one slide, just reminding everyone on the proposed tax rate.
All right. At this time, I'll open up a public hearing on item C2. Anybody wishing to speak about this item, please step forward to the mic. Seeing no one rise up and speak, we'll close the public hearing and go to item D1.
Item D1 is a resolution approving the First Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Fries &amp; Nichols Incorporated for the Deleone Plaza Expansion Project in the amount of $74,185.
All right, so I do have our prepared presentation. Good evening, mayor and council. We're gonna talk about a contract amendment for Fries &amp; Nichols. So as part of the Deleone Plaza Expansion moves along, as you may remember, Fries &amp; Nichols was hired to provide design assistance for the plaza expansion back in November of '22. The project has progressed, and staff has requested Fries &amp; Nichols to assess with design, design assistance for a water fountain. As you may recall, we originally had proposed a water feature similar to a splash pad, but now we are looking at a water fountain design. Along with the amendment, there is some foundation infrastructure that needs to be engineered to be strong enough for the granite podium that the statues are gonna sit on. And I'll go into more detail of these. Along with that is additional non-scoped bidding and construction admin tasks. And we also asked them to provide us new renderings of the plaza and drone photography once it is complete. And this is in the amount of $74,185. So as you can see, for the water fountain design, they're going to have to add in a lot of design work for the construction of the water fountain. This would be a new water fountain designed with two low masonry walls of cast stone coping to match other walls featured in the plaza. It'd be chemically treated with a basin. We would have a pumping system in the storage closet of the restroom. The amount is approximately $250,000 to $300,000 to construct. These are all assumptions, again, for the water fountain design. Therefore, it would require several plan sheet updates to the conformed set of plans that Fries &amp; Nichols is willing to provide us and then give to logger companies. There is electrical engineering needed for the fountain. Water fountain is to include a separate water meter, so forth and so on. So that's a list of all the things that would be needed to put in the water fountain in lieu of where the water feature was going to go. Here is a conceptual design of the water feature. As you can see, the two basins, those little bitty circles in the middle are essentially the jets or the little fountain, and around that would also be some LED lighting in there, so it could be lit at night. And again, the pumping system would be in that storage unit, storage room on the bottom right side of the restroom. So for the foundation, there is some engineering, like I mentioned, that the, the concrete needs to be stronger to support the three tons of granite that we're gonna put on top of it and then put the statues, therefore, on top of that. So we want to make sure that that concrete stays nice and pretty after we put the statue on top of it. And then here are the additional non-scoped bidding construction admin tasks that they presented in this agreement along with the project. And if I'm going too fast, and if you have any questions, please let me know. And then rendering and drone photography, like I mentioned, sure.
I'm curious, Procore actually eliminates time in the submittal process.
So it's my understanding that the reason why they put Procore in here is because that is not typically something they are accustomed to using. So maybe they had to do something on their end. I'm not sure what that looks like. But I think the gist of this here is more or less, they took on more submittals than originally anticipated and then had to also address the re-submittals with a 100-plus submittals.
Submittal process, right? The specifications that are issued by the architect and engineer determine what submittals are required, not what logger wants. It's what's required by their own design. So the quantity of submittals are under their control. And if they are not approved and are rejected or revised and resubmit, that's part of the process. The way the process used to work was you made six to eight hard copies and sent them all to the general contractor. General contractor would forward all those in binders to the architect. Procore is merely a web-based platform where you submit everything electronically, so you don't have the paper costs, the reproduction costs. It saves time from getting from one place to the other. You're not sending it by mail anymore. So I don't really buy into this, that it takes more hours, and especially with the quantity either. That's, that's their doing because of their design and their specifications.
I know from some of the feedback with Fries &amp; Nichols, too, was not all of the subcontractors were using the online portal. So they also had to take in some of those submittals by paper or email. So for what it's worth, that was some of the feedback that I was also given.
We can certainly, obviously, follow up with them in more specificity on this element specifically.
Absolutely.
And as I mentioned this morning in our meeting, you know, part of this is also just increasing the role with the weekly meetings and kind of help us navigate that a little better.
But I mean, this tool, Procore, or, you know, there's a handful of other ones, but it serves as a library for all the contractors, all the subcontractors to get into, all the architects, engineers, owners. It tracks your RFIs. If you got requests for informations, it has all the drawings on there, has the specs on there. So it's a virtual library of the entire production of paper and, and stuff, and it's really a great time saver, because everything's there at your fingertips. So anyway.
We can follow up on that.
Thank you.
All right, and then we have rendering and drone photography. We are looking at having new photography made so that it does show what the final plans look like with the water fountain included. And then also, we'd like to showcase the project as, when it's completed, to have updated pictures and promotion of the facility. Here's the breakdown in the cost overall by line item. And that's all I have. Any other questions?
I have a question on, on the water feature itself. I know we have a projected cost there, but that cost won't be known until any design is completed.
Right. So essentially, what we're asking, or what Fries &amp; Nichols is needing to do is for us to, for them to design it, to come up with that initial cost. And then we will have a change order that comes later that will tell us and tell you all what that cost is for the water fountain.
Okay. And, and on the, the depiction that you had on there?
I can go back.
Yeah, if you would. Is, is that, so I guess my question is, is this intended to have access actually into this water feature, water fountain? Or is it just walled off to prevent people from actually getting into it? Because I know we talked about a water feature at one point, and I wasn't sure what, what the concept was or the intent was now for, for this fountain.
So essentially, it's just like any general water fountain that you would have in a public space. Anybody would be able to put their hands in it, but it's not meant for to play in or to put your body in there. It's more for aesthetics.
Okay. And the, and the basin that it'll sit, that the water will be in, is, I think, two or three feet off the ground.
Right.
So it's not a water element that you'd be able to run through, as an example. And that's why this option was more cost-friendly for us, because we went from having a water feature that was interactive to this that's not interactive.
Correct.
Okay, you're calling this a water fountain, but it doesn't look like a water fountain. It still looks like a water feature. Why is it being called a water fountain now?
Because it's not interactive.
Right. To try to differentiate what we were calling it before.
But this looks like the same sketch that you had given us. I don't know if it was on our one-to-one. I don't know if it was on a one-to-one or, we've seen the sketch before.
I did, yes, I did show this to you in a one-on-one meeting to show that this is what we were working towards. What was originally thought of doing was having an interactive water feature where the water was coming from the ground in the middle of the circle. And that interactive feature would be interactive just by the nature of design because you'd be able to run through it, you'd be able to stand above water when it comes off the ground, right? So that obviously necessitates a higher level of treatment of that water. And you may recall, you know, Jason, former Parks Director, at some point mentioning, you know, that that's also why we were being real careful with our splash pads because that's when you can run into issues of just health concern. And so then we shifted away from that to this element where it's non-interactive. So somebody would not be able to run through this because this would sit about two or three feet above ground within a basin. And so that difference of interactive versus not interactive is why it shifted from a water feature to a water fountain.
Okay, okay, I understand that. So what about the money that was going to be given for the water feature? We still don't have it, right?
Great question. So we do have the money, but the foundation prefers that money be used for an interactive water feature. And so at this point, we need to explore the feasibility of completing this project, not utilizing the funds from the foundation because they, again, prefer for the money to be used for an interactive water feature that kids could actually play in and would be encouraged to play in, which this would not be that. However, because this is not an interactive water feature, we do anticipate it costing less than what the more expensive interactive feature would have cost.
And if we do approve that design, I'm assuming that, once we get that cost, that will come back to us for approval as a change order to the contract. Okay. All right. So this isn't approving, spending that money. It's just seeing what the design would be and what the cost would be.
Right. It's just giving Fries and Nichols the permission to design it and then give us a cost estimate.
So there's a possibility that this, a water feature may not be implemented after all, or if council deems the cost too high.
Yeah, I mean theoretically, correct. I mean theoretically, it can get designed and then we choose to not, you know, it's too much money or we choose for whatever reason to support or not support the change order. I mean, the construction documents are already completed to not account for the water feature, right? So that's there. If you've driven by, you've noticed that there have already begun to form the foundation for the restroom building. And so staff and Fries and Nichols has been in touch with the contractor so that they can actually account for any conduit or anything that might be needed in case this actually happens. So that coordination is taking place to ensure that, you know, there's minimal impact to the work that's being done now. But theoretically, you're correct. We can approve this agreement, get the final figure on how much it would cost, and then choose to not do it.
So the floor of the fountain itself or the feature is going to be twelve, two to three foot off the ground?
Right. So I think a good visual is if you took your diocese up here where you're sitting, it could essentially be about that tall, maybe not that wide. But then in the middle would be a basin and you have little bubbler jets.
How deep is the basin going to be?
I believe it said two to three feet.
What's going to keep somebody from getting in there and playing in it or vandalizing it or bathing in it?
Probably just general surveillance.
Forty inches is pretty wide. It's wider than this diocese.
We did, there was, Councilwoman Scott's not here, but during my one-on-one meeting with her and this topic came up, she brought up that item. And we did discuss with Fries and Nichols, and there are design elements that could be contributed to it to help alleviate some of that. So for example, the bottom of the basin can be designed with certain, you know, stones or certain elements that would, you know, make standing in it or laying in it extremely uncomfortable.
And could fill it up.
You know, so there are some design features that can be, you know, incorporated to try and discourage some of that. But ultimately, you know, there'd be nothing that would stop somebody from vandalizing the same way there's nothing that stops somebody right now from vandalizing anything. But our idea is that with proper lighting, you know, we can help keep it secure.
And the water itself is recycled, so there's no water waste?
Right.
And our drought contingency plans has plans for the splash pads to be shut down in case of drought stage four, I believe. And I imagine that this fountain would fall into that same category where you're not adding water to it or.
Yeah. And even if it technically doesn't, we would because for us, it'd be important to send that message.
Right. Slightly off topic, are there water fountains around the areas so people can drink out of them?
There will be a drinking water fountain to the entrance of the restroom, and it will also have one of the refillable bottle ports.
Are those restrooms going to be locked at certain times?
Yes, they are designed to have the magnetic locking system for them to be able to lock at certain times and unlock at certain times. So you won't be able to go in, but if you happen to be in there while they do lock, you can go out. And they will be air-conditioned and heated.
Any other questions?
My move, we adopt D one.
All right. Motion and a second. No other comments?
I would just comment that I know that Mr. Garza and I, one-on-one, we discussed the water fountain and the water feature. And, you know, I think there's been somewhat of an expectation just from the drawings that were put out and pictorials that were put out and things of that nature. I know it's out of the plans right now. I had concerns about it from the beginning, particularly when it was a water feature just based on cost, water usage, maintenance, that sort of thing. Those were somewhat alleviated when we had the grant that was going to pay for that cost, the initial cost of it. Now that that's not available, at least in my mind, those costs have reemerged or those concerns have reemerged just in terms of cost of construction. But I'm also concerned about maintenance, ongoing maintenance with those. I know we've seen issues with our splash pads. I know this is a different animal. But, you know, I want to make sure that we're not building in something that's going to create issues for us down the road somewhere. You know, I know we don't know the cost of that yet, but I think that's going to be important for, at least from my mind, from the standpoint of move forward that or not. I'm willing to take a look at it at this point. But certainly, the cost element is definitely going to be top of mind when it comes to adding this into the plans, no doubt. Because it's going to be ongoing maintenance as well.
Exactly.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Okay, we're on to item E one.
Item E one is an ordinance approving and adopting a budget for fiscal year beginning on October first, 2023 in the total amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. I'm sorry, two-hundred-and-fifty-five million, eight-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars. It would have been much nicer at the lower number.
Okay. Do we have any presentations, further presentations? Are we good with the other ones? All right. So we can entertain a motion for item E one.
My move, we adopt E one.
I'll second.
All right. I just want to thank the staff for getting us to this point. I know we're not across the finish line yet, but I know you'll start working on this in March. And in some cases, now you're working on next year's budget already. So a lot of time and effort goes into this. I appreciate all the staff because it takes everybody to get it together. And I remind everybody, it's a quarter of a billion-dollar budget that we are passing. We've never been to that level before. But the next one also, we'll lower the tax rate, so. All right. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Items E two.
Item E two is an ordinance setting the tax rate for the 2023 tax year at the total rate of point four-eight-nine-eight per one-hundred dollars of property valuation.
And a motion needs to be made in special language. Everybody has in front of them if they so choose to make that motion.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of the tax rate of zero-point-four-eight-nine-eight, which is effectively a five-point-three-eight percent increase in the tax rate.
I second that motion.
Thank you. A motion to approve item C two, or E two, and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And then at this time, we will recess into executive session. We do plan on returning from executive session to take up item E three.
All right. The City Council recessed for executive session on the 29th day of August, 2023 at 5:38 PM. The subject matter of executive session deliberation is as follows. Texas Government Code 551.087, 551.072, and 551.071.
...
You ready? All right. City Council will now go back into regular session. It's 6:12 PM. And we're going to take up item E3. It's an approval resolution to forward the draft airport joint action agreement to the FAA for their review and comment.
I'd like to table E3 to the first meeting in October.
Second.
Okay. So just give a little bit of explanation on why. And if you want, I will go through it unless you want to.
No, no, you do it.
After version eight was changed two weeks ago, it brought in a bunch of expenses into the airport budget. Specifically, the large expense was the ARF, A-R-R-F. And I can't ever get the acronym right, but it's the fire rescue for the airport. And we just need some time to make sure we understand fully all the impacts on the budget as it relates to expenses that are getting moved into the airport, whether it be with the lease mentioned in the airport for the county and the airport commission, what insurance is going to be required that's not currently carried in the budget, administrative expenses, lease expenses, I'm sorry, and the ARF. Also, I've asked for Mr. Larrana to provide us a list of ground leases, building leases, kind of so we understand the revenue side of that operation as well. And we just want to do our due diligence. We don't want to enter anything that looks like it's where the airport right now is operating in the black, that these added expenses that are required for the airport to run and aren't currently in that budget but will be under this agreement or understood fully so we can just have an informed decision on what we're putting the taxpayers on the hook for, really, what it comes down to. Still see some benefits in this agreement, but also want to make sure that we're doing correctly. So anybody want to add anything to that?
No. Well said. We, I think everybody up here wants the airport to succeed for the community. And it's vital that it does, but we need to do our due diligence before entering into any agreement for our taxpayers.
Yeah. And I think with, you know, with these recent changes, it's brought on a whole new avenue, if you will, or a whole new area of questions that we just, you know, I think it would be irresponsible for us to vote on this tonight without getting that information to have as part of the consideration. So I think you covered what we need.
And also, timing wise and going through the whole process, I explained this, I think, yesterday in sales tax, but I'll go through it again because we haven't really talked about it up here. This agreement, if we reach an agreement with the county, would then go to the FAA for approval. FAA could accept it as it is written. They could make suggestive comments to change. It would still need to then come back to be ratified by both bodies or accept the changes as by the FAA or say, no, we don't want to do that part. And if we get to a point where we do come to this initial agreement, we will also set up a airport advisory board, which would transition to an airport commission if we get past FAA approval and they issue a joint certificate for operation. At that time, it starts a clock of 180 days to get a budget and CIP approved by both bodies. So if we get this fall, any type of agreement done, it won't impact our 24 budget that we've been working on and voted on tonight. This would likely have to be wrapped into the 25 budget, just so everybody knows. That's just kind of the timing of everything. But I wanted to make sure everybody understood that, too.
We also want an agreement that's a win for the airport commission, not that doesn't handicap the airport commission. That's important to me, anyway.
Green.
Okay.
Totally green. Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion on the table, to table. We have a motion to table, item E3 until the first meeting in October. You got a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And that concludes the meeting. Thank you.